If everybody could please find their seat, we'll get going here. The council meeting of April 11th, 2011 will now come to order. Please turn off all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. Willis City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, one moment, please. Thank you, as I call your name, as you announce that you are present, please also make sure that you press the flashing red light to indicate such. Mayor Natal. Mayor Pro Tem Snyder.
Here.
And would you press your light, ma'am?
Sorry.
That's okay. Councilman Moreno.
Here.
Councilman Benson.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Here.
Councilwoman Teeter.
Here.
Councilman Johnson. Councilman McEl Downey.
Here.
Councilman Bullock.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Snyder, you do have a quorum.
Thank you. Will the audience please rise for a moment of silence and then join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, the city staff will pass around a microphone and the council invites you to please introduce yourselves.
Catherine Lovato.
Wayne Ray.
Mary Reitz.
Debbie Williams.
Mike Thompson.
Cheryl Price.
Dave Price.
Brett Bidgood.
Janice Genova.
Doug Fuentes.
Pam Aker.
Dave Durham.
Doug Durham.
Biremi Schneider.
Don Schneider.
Maria Svenka.
Ryan Svenka.
Joe Howard.
Ellen Haug.
Melissa Clifford.
Ramona Edwards.
Joseph Edgich.
Anna Los.
Jeanette Los.
David Gomez.
Jocelyn Hernandez.
Chuck Sanyer.
Maria Lopez.
Anastasia Marian.
Michael Oliver.
Freddie Arias.
Armando Rosales.
Carl Laxton.
Jesse Joseph.
Guillermo Serna.
Larry Quintana.
Tava Borga.
Adrian Fontes.
Marisela Espinoza.
Leonard Enriquez.
Yesenia Asensio.
Julio Chilera.
Aguilas Povida.
Ivan Sosa.
Eric Gutierrez.
Joe Ramos.
Terry Yocum.
Eduardo Rivas.
Willie Plenny Wolf.
Joy Bishop.
Jean LaFle.
Lynn Howewell, City Manager's Office.
Ken Lee.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Greg Clemmons, Public Works Department.
Lea Noel, City Manager's Office.
Roger Tenchberg, Finance.
Heather Spencer, Human Resources.
Sean Ford.
Viva Schroeder.
Gary Dretter.
Christie Douglas.
Steve Douglas.
Carolyn Curls.
Brandon Curls.
Mariah Mestes.
Courtney Curls.
Teresa Schofield.
Warren Curls. Sherman Papke.
Melody Mestes.
Brianna Mestes.
Chuck Baker, Police Department.
Laurie Woog, Police Department.
Carol Har.
Dolores Har.
Tom Rowe.
Jean Wagner.
Kathy Wagner.
Linda Bond.
Joe Sandoval.
Aaron Conway, Police Department.
Hi, David Conway.
Michelle Halsted, Communications Director.
Phil Baca, Chief of Police.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Damon Denham.
Robin Martinez.
Crystal Zamora.
Joyce Martinez.
Mac Martina.
Heidi Flowers, Victim Services.
Michelle Harmio, Victim Services.
Is that everyone? Thank you so much. Tonight, the City Council would like to honor Mr. Warren Curls for his contributions to the city. We will be providing to his widow Carolyn and his children Bud and Melody a proclamation as well as a plaque. Warren Curls was a 30-year veteran of the Commerce City Police Department, founding member of the city charter committee, and a longtime resident of the city. At this time, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Warren Curls moved to Commerce City in the 1950s, serving his country for four years in the U.S. Navy prior to joining the city's police department in 1962, where he was one of only four officers at the time; and whereas Warren Curls wore many hats during his 30-year police career, including patrolman, sergeant, lieutenant, K-9 unit trainer, ambulance driver, dog catcher, baby deliverer, and president of the Colorado Law Enforcement Association. Whereas, he was a skilled gunsmith and an expert master in firearm shooting, helping build the country's first pistol range and earning recognition as one of the governor's top 20 shooters, as well as one of the nation's top 88 shooters, where his name is listed on a plaque that hangs in the White House. And whereas, Warren Curls served the community in which he lived as an original member of the Homeworld Charter Committee, a member of the Board of Adjustments, Chair of the Liquor Licensing Authority for 14 years, a police pension board member and a two-term board member of the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District; and whereas, he was committed to his family, helping his son achieve the rank of Eagle Scout or selling Girl Scout cookies each year with his daughter; and whereas, Warren Curls passed away on February 23rd, 2011, and the city desires to give tribute and recognize these endeavors that benefited our community. Now, therefore, on behalf of the City Council, I hereby proclaim and make special recognition to celebrate the numerous contributions of Warren Curls who helped to make Commerce City a quality community for a lifetime. Congratulations, Mr. Curls and your family. I would like to invite the family of Mr. Curls, Carolyn and your family to please come forward so we can present you with this plaque. And I just want to say personally that I was honored to serve with Mr. Curls on the liquor authority and just having known the family for most of my life, and it's an honor for me to be here with you tonight. So please come forward. Thank you. Would any of you like to say anything? You're certainly welcome to.
I would just like to thank everybody for everything, all the support, and the police department especially. They've just been wonderful. Everybody has been wonderful. Thank you.
I'd like to say the same, especially the police department, since I grew up, know mostly everybody that's been there forever. And on behalf of the family, we'd also like to present a check for the citizens' victim service program.
I just want to say thank you again to this wonderful man and for all the work he did for the community and to his wonderful family. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Bullock.
I make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Councilwoman Teeter.
I second the motion.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation. May I have a voice vote, please? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against, it is approved. And I just want to say once again how truly honored we were to be a part of a man's life who had just left such a legacy for the city of Commerce City. Thank you again. Before I call for the next proclamation, which is National Crime Victims Week, I would like to invite the chief, Chief Baca, to come forward and say a few words, please. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Bauer. The keypad is not working. I'm not sure if...
I'm sorry, the what?
Our keypads are not working, so we won't be able to... I'm not able to vote or...
Oh, you're right to speak.
Okay, let's try before... If we can just take one minute, then? Let's try something.
Sorry, chief.
Thank you. Sorry, chief.
Paying me by the hour, councilman, that's okay.
Okay, if council...
Okay, it's working now.
If council would just try...
The request to speak button works now.
Does it work? It is? Hold on.
Yeah, I have it working up here.
Try something.
And chief, would you do me the honor of reading the proclamation?
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you try... Would each of you try just pressing your buttons, your roll call buttons, again for me, please? Benson? Okay, let's see if that takes care of the problem.
Thank you.
Mine's working now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Yep, you're on.
All right. My name's Phil Baca. I'm the chief of police here in Commerce City. And before I read the proclamation, I really feel like I'd like to say something about retired Lieutenant Curls. And I did not know the lieutenant personally as a police officer. However, Chuck Baker and I were fortunate enough to meet Warren at lunch at a couple of restaurants here previously, so I did at least meet him. But, you know, I feel like I know the gentleman simply because there are so many historical pictures in the police department. If you go back in the police department, Commander Larry Woog was good enough to save all those pictures as our department historian and gather all of those mementos over the years from the early 50s and 60s. And Warren is in so many of those photographs. And I was thinking back and thinking when Warren was a sergeant, I was in sixth grade at Derby Elementary. So...
Wow.
It's not that he's that much older than I am, but it was just interesting to put that in perspective, that he was. And I see him in so many photographs back there. But for the benefit of the family and the benefit of the community, I'd just like to say that, you know, the gentleman, as an officer, as a sergeant, as a lieutenant, really laid a great foundation for the Commerce City Police Department so that the community and his family members can certainly be proud of all of his accomplishments and his dedication of service that he gave to the city so honorably. And so we're here to honor this man, who's no longer with us, but he had a truly wonderful life. And I think if you think about what he did on behalf of the police department and his services as a police officer for the good of our community, we can never forget him. He will forever be memorialized on the walls of the police department. And I think the family can take that to heart. Nobody will ever forget Warren. He will be with us forever. And that is absolutely a wonderful thing to think about as a son, a daughter, a wife, and everybody. So we will always remember Warren and all of his great deeds and accomplishments. So let me get on with the proclamation, and I will read that. This is in honor of National Crime Victims Rights Week. Whereas, 20 million Americans are victims of crime each year and crime affects many more, including families, friends, and communities; and whereas, crime exacts an emotional, physical, psychological, and financial tool on victims that has the potential to irrevocably change the course of their lives forever; and whereas, victim assistance programs across the country are reaching more victims and criminal justice officials are honoring victims' rights more consistently, public understanding of victims' rights remains minimal and challenges face our nation's victim services system; and whereas, Commerce City has a victim services unit staffed by two full-time employees and eight volunteers, all of whom provide on-scene incident assistance to crime victims 24 hours a day, seven days a week; and whereas, the unit served 740 individuals last year, primarily responding to domestic violence or sexual assault on children with essential items such as diapers, toiletries, teddy bears, blankets, and clothes; and whereas, Commerce City is participating in National Crime Victims Rights Week, help to raise awareness about the services provided by the unit, as well as recruit volunteers to participate in this important program. Now, therefore, on behalf of the City Council, I hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through 16th as National Crime Victims Rights Week, reaffirming the city's commitment to respect victims' rights and address their needs throughout the year. Thank you. I would like to take a couple of more minutes. I'd like to call my two Victims Rights staff forward and like to introduce them. Come up here, ladies. This young lady directly to my left is Heidi Flowers, and to her left is Michelle Harmio. They are responsible for providing an incredible amount of service. Although they're both fairly new, I can tell you that our new Victims Rights Unit has established quite a reputation in Adams County, has probably done more work, recognizable work, in the last few months than we probably have done in the last several years. These two young ladies are absolutely dedicated, they're full of energy, and they're the brightest two individuals we've had the fortunate benefit to have in the Commerce City Police Department. So I'd like to give them a hand to recognize all of their hard work. I'd also like to recognize Carolyn Curls, if you'll please step up here one more time. We do have a plaque for you, Ms. Curls. And I'd like to please step over here, and I'd really like to extend my appreciation for your generosity, your family's generosity, for the donation you made this evening. And I know the amount, and I'd like to say the amount if that's not improper. It was a very generous donation of $500. And thank you so much. I really feel that we should be paying you. Not you, not us. But we thank you for your generosity. We'd like to just give you a certificate of appreciation here, and it's just a plaque that says National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 10th through 16th. Certificate of appreciation presented to Carolyn Curls for your outstanding service on behalf of victims of crime. We thank you very much for your generosity. Thank you so much, ma'am. Can we take our picture? Let me take my glasses off. One last item. I'd like to have Detective Erin Conroy. Erin Conroy, please step up to the podium. Detective Conroy's here with his young son, they're going to come up here together. I'd like to say a few words because Detective Conroy is being honored this week. He is actually... We submitted Detective Conroy's name with several other... Actually, in competition with several other detectives, other law enforcement officers throughout the county. Erin has been chosen to receive the Dale R. McLaughlin Award this week, which really recognizes outstanding service by a member of law enforcement in this county to specific victims. And Detective Conroy is selected by that esteemed panel that includes other law enforcement officers, judges, the district attorney here for his outstanding service. So if we could give them all a hand. I'd like to say just a few words, I won't go into all the details, but Detective Conroy is one of our premier detectives. He's one of our core detectives. That means he will be a detective as long as he performs at the top of his skill level, and I'm sure that will always happen. He will never be rotated out unless he gets promoted to a different rank. But Detective Conroy handles a lot of our most difficult cases, and those difficult cases are domestic violence, sexual assault, and sexual assault on children. And the award that he won for his recognition deals with three children who were assaulted in this manner. And I can tell you that Detective Conroy did an unrelenting investigation, 24 hours of continuous investigation, interviewing three young children as victim witnesses. In that interview, he was able to develop probable cause, to secure a search warrant, and successfully serve that warrant and make an arrest, and secure other evidence that resulted in the conviction of this individual. So it was an incredible job. He didn't lose focus, he didn't even take a break, he continued to work full-time until this case was absolutely a done deal and the conviction was secured. And this is the type of individual that you have work in your department. Erin is not alone, we have several dedicated individuals. Erin is just one of our best and happens to be recognized this week. But again, he is, you know, the quality of detectives and the police officers that we have in this agency where we employ 120 people. So I want to thank you for supporting us. I want to thank Detective Conroy for the outstanding work that he does and the sacrifice that he has made in serving the community here in Commerce City. So once again, thank you, Erin. I appreciate it. And Erin, this is just a simple certificate of recognition of your efforts. Thank you very much. All right. Let's get a picture, fellas. Turn that around. Look at the camera. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Councilwoman Teeter.
Yes. Move to approve National Crime Victims Week proclamation.
Councilman McEl Downey.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Proclamation passes. Thank you very much. Next, we have citizen communication. The two public comment rosters were made available on the table at the entrance of the council chambers for anyone who wishes to address the council. One roster is for non-agenda items, and the second is for action items listed on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record, and you are reminded that each speaker is limited to three minutes. So we will start with Ms. Robin Martinez. Hi, Robin.
Good evening, council members. I'm Robin Martinez, and I'm located at 5491 E 65th Avenue. And I come... And I come before you tonight with some concerns and requests and hope that you can help. Let me start with my first request. It's going to be that cameras would be installed on 64th and Holly, which would be right next to Central Elementary, for anyone who's unfamiliar. I have several reasons. I'd like to start with the recent shooting at the location of 64th and Holly of Dejon Quinn. I believe that cameras could have helped in this investigation. That's just a start. I'd like to recognize him also in our National Crime Victims Week. My second reason would be also for the safety of the 1,300 children and their family attending the surrounding areas and the schools. CLA, which would be Community Leadership Academy, Central Elementary in Sandville, they're all within a half a block or so of each other, making like a horseshoe, like a U. So, we're all within one main road, being the main road to all access of these schools, which is 64th and Holly. So, this would be the cameras that would give a lot of reassurance and safety to the kids and the families in the community who are walking within these schools because parking has become a huge mess. Parent parking to Central, I believe that we have access of maybe 45 parking spots to the parents at Central Elementary in which there are 700 students there. These parents are parking all over in the surrounding neighborhoods, causing a high friction of extreme manic because we're worried and concerned for these kids. There are not speed bumps there, there's no cameras there for another incident, God forbid, if it were to happen. We also have had, like I said, numerous incidents and accidents in the location. Again, many school-aged children, 1,300 accessing one main street, getting to all three schools, and their families who, like I said, have no choice but to walk with their little children behind them and on the side of them. You know, anybody could come up along and hit or just think they're stopping. And, you know, there's just a lot of confusion of people walking and crossing and cars all the way around. We did have a recent crosswalk put in at Central, however, it has not helped the situation. It's actually kind of made a bigger mess for all of us. Last but not least, if I feel like I had more time to communicate with you, I'd actually be able to share many more concerns and reasons before you. However, many of them would also be of concern to our school board as well because of the main concern here is, again, for the safety of the children and our community. The community unfortunately is like one big main strip of three main schools, 1,300 children and their family, and it's one road. And we're asking for cameras to be put in on that main road just to secure and make us all feel comforted again. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Mr. Denham, did you have anything? You have three minutes as well.
No, I'm good.
You finished? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Speed bumps might be of help also.
Thank you so much. City Manager Flannery, I have to agree with Ms. Martinez and Mr. Denham. I have gone through that neighborhood myself at school hours, both in the morning and the afternoon, and it is a very dangerous situation over there. There's not nearly enough adequate parking, and kids are just everywhere. I mean, they run across the street. I mean, mothers are trying to keep up with children, and they do the best they can, but it's really difficult over there. It's a congested area with a small street, and I would have to agree that we definitely need to take a look at that. Thank you. Councilwoman Teeter?
Yes, I agree too. And Mr. Flannery, can we or the chief or someone look into putting a camera in that area? And also, Robin, we have two school board members here this evening that may be able to discuss some of the issues you have. Thank you.
Councilmember Moreno?
Ms. Martinez, thank you for coming and sharing your concerns. Obviously, the area that you live is Ward 1, and I represent Ward 1. And I can't agree with you more that the situation has become very dangerous for both the parents and the students in that area. You know, parents, when they go and drop off students or they go and pick them up, they're parking right on Holly. And, you know, cars can't always see when kids are crossing the street, and it is a dangerous situation. So, just to echo other council members, if we can look into a solution to that, that'd be really helpful for the people in that area.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here. Max and Joyce Martinez?
Actually, we are here on behalf of our daughter and son-in-law, Robin and Damon. We live right next door.
Would you go ahead and give me your name and address for the record? Thanks.
5501 E. 65th Avenue.
Thank you.
Commerce City. We just want to reinforce all of the same problem. We've had some serious mishaps there. I've seen children darting in and out of cars, and it's been dangerous. We actually had to add a drive extra to our driveway because we couldn't get in and out of our yard several times because cars were blocking the area.
Picking up the children.
It is dangerous. We need, we really do need some sort of speed bumps. And I'm concerned also about the RTD bus that parks right in front of the school. It's right there where the bus, school buses, drop the kids off. It's right next to it. And I think it's a very dangerous situation. And before something were to happen, I'd rather be here tonight to express that before something does happen to a child there.
Yeah. And another thing, we have a lot of speeders going down on 65th Avenue. Matter of fact, Commerce City Police Department is aware about a red Camaro just zapping down. And if we would have speed bumps, it would slow it down. And the night of the incident when that boy got shot, if we would have speed bumps, we probably would have a good chance to see the vehicle. Or it could have.
It did come down our street. It almost hit our granddaughter's car.
So, if we could have speed bumps, it would really help. Really would help the neighborhood. And, you know, even the school buses are speeding down.
I hate to say it, we've seen it.
Yeah. And three years ago, we had the public safety come out, put a line across, see what the activity is. They told us there's not enough traffic going through. But they're wrong. They don't live there. We see it every day. And if some of you members would like to just drop by, look at the situation, we'd be happy to show you what we're talking about.
Several years ago, we actually had a murder on Glencoe. And the person got off the RTD bus, walked straight down our street, went to the house on Glencoe, and there was a murder in the house there. Killed the lady in the house on Glencoe.
So, it's very serious around our neighborhood.
That is a big concern, the bus being right there in front of the school.
And now, we put up security cameras for our safety. You know, it's just getting out of hand. Middle of the night, you see kids walking, 1:00. It's just getting out of hand. And when you tell them, hey, what are you up to? None of your business, you know? So, I'll just leave it as that. I hope you people really take it serious for us. We've been here over 30 years, and I live there. You know? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate both of you being here.
Thank you.
And we certainly will have City Manager Flannery and the chief look into that. Thanks. Next person I have is Doug. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Teeter?
Thank you this evening for coming, Max and your family. Mr. Flannery, seven years ago, five years ago, and even this morning, I met with this family trying to get speed bumps on that street. And a traffic study took place probably two times, and they said it was not valid. I feel it is very valid. And if someone can check into that again, I mean, it just, these things are happening over and over, and this family and the neighbors need help. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Doug, and I'm sorry, I'm probably going to mess up your last name. So, if you'd help me out, that'd be great. Thanks.
I'll give it a whirl.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and pro temp and council members. My name's Doug Frentriss, and I live at 11361 Chambers Drive. And I live in the Reserve at Buffalo Run, which is part of the villages of Buffalo Run East. My neighbors and I would like to thank those of you that were able to attend the community meeting last Tuesday night regarding information on the newest proposal by Carapace Homes for building in our neighborhood. We appreciate having you present to hear our concerns and thoughts on that proposal. It was a long meeting, as we recall. Several of my neighbors are here tonight in support to further impress to you our concerns regarding the proposal and what it may mean to our neighborhood and larger community, if not the city as a whole. Our presence here is not to encourage you to flat-out deny Carapace the opportunity to build, but to encourage you to direct staff to deny their current proposal. We strongly encourage you to remember that the villages of Buffalo Run East and all golf course communities are the long-term vision, a long-term vision that seeks to promote harmony, diversity, and prosperity for Commerce City, a quality community for a lifetime. Giving up the vision or accepting any proposal that just meets the standards doesn't move the city forward. Commerce City is known locally and probably nationally for its forward thinking, not for doing just the bare minimum and short-term thinking. This beautiful civic center that we're in tonight is a Silver Lead certified. It didn't get that certification by council and the citizens doing and accepting the bare minimums. Buffalo Run Golf Course is nationally known and very tough. It didn't get that way by just meeting the standards. Carapace is asking the current residents of the Reserve to accept just barely above the bare minimums. According to Commerce City Community Development Staff, the Carapace proposal meets the standards of the Land Development Code. We don't believe that's good enough. The proposal does not meet the standards set forth. The approved PUD for the villages of Buffalo Run East or the concept of development has resented to and approved by the council in the late 1990s, and it certainly is not keeping with the overall character and harmony of the existing neighborhood or the intent of the original vision, approved by city council. The previous builder for the Reserve at Buffalo Run went far and above and beyond the minimum standards for our homes. We're asking council to continue to expect the builders to step up and help council in furthering the vision of the villages of Buffalo Run East, particularly the Reserve at Buffalo Run, and continuing with progress that has been made to create the quality community for a lifetime. Please help us preserve the Reserve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a statement for the council.
Absolutely.
I think it would help the council as well as all of the citizens in the audience to hear what I have to say regarding this case. When a land use question comes to the city, whether it's a approval of elevations, if it's a zoning case, or subdivision approval, there's always the issue of whether or not a decision that is made is going to be reviewed by a court. And when you make a decision, that decision, if you granted the subdivision, the property owners that are affected by that subdivision or by the elevations, whatever's involved or by the zoning, may appeal that decision to a court. Or if you deny the application, then the builder or landowner can appeal that decision to the court. And it's my job as your city attorney to be sure that when the case is appealed to the court, that the court has an opportunity to uphold the decision that the council makes. Now, if, for example, the council has expressed an opinion, say, tonight or some future night, before the public hearing is held and you have prejudged the case, it's very likely that a court would overrule your decision. So, if you denied the application, the court could very well say that application should be granted because you didn't give it a proper hearing. So, my caution is, in citizens' communication at this stage of the proceeding, because we're not in a public hearing process at this stage, you can hear the citizens what they express, but do not comment as to whether or not you come forward and say, well, I'm all in favor of what the citizens are saying, because right away, you're disqualified from voting when it becomes a public hearing. There will be a time when we'll have a public hearing, assuming that people disagree with whatever decision is made, where citizens will have a chance to be heard on the record, and that record then will go before the court, and the court will review the record to determine whether or not your decision should be upheld. But my caution is, is that you prejudged the case, and then it comes out in the court case that you prejudged it. You shouldn't have not have voted. My job is to keep you from voting then if it's obvious that you prejudged it. So, be careful and don't express an opinion. You may have personal opinions, but don't express an opinion as to whether or not you're in favor or whether you're against their request, whatever it is. And I just want the citizens to know that by your not saying anything at this stage doesn't mean that you're not sympathetic to their cause. It just means that you're being careful that if the case goes to court, you're not going to have it thrown out and have the citizens lose if you denied the application, or vice-versa. If you grant the application, then the builder or the landowner would have the same argument. So, tonight, it's appropriate to hear what the citizens have to say if they want to say it tonight. But when the public hearing process comes, there'll be a notice posted, and they'll get word that there's a public hearing, and that's when it really counts as to what you're hearing them say and what your decision's going to be. Tonight is just for information, if you will, but it doesn't count at all toward the public hearing process, because when you open the public hearing, then you'll have evidence presented. And when you make a decision, you have to base that decision on the evidence presented at the hearing, not something you've heard outside the hearing. So, if that's clear, then I'll stop what I have to say. But if you have any questions, I'll certainly try to answer them.
As always, we appreciate your words of wisdom, City Attorney Gaylor. Councilmember Moreno?
Mr. Gaylor, I do have a question. So, in this particular situation, there will be a public hearing or no?
The public hearing process only comes about if a decision is made that somebody's unhappy about. Now, if the decision is made for the council to decide this issue, then that would be at a public hearing. If the decision is made for the staff to make the decision, and then, let's say that the residents are unhappy with that decision, then they appeal it to the council, then that'll be a public hearing. Anything that comes before the council will be a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Benson?
Mr. Gaylor, what is the projected timeline for having either the staff make a decision or the council make a decision? And at what point will it be determined whether the staff's going to make the decision or the council's going to make the decision?
The Land Development Code provides that the decision, when an application is filed by an applicant, must be made within a reasonable period of time. You can't stall the case forever. A landowner's entitled to hear a decision in a short period of time. The application has been filed with the city. I think the case is properly before the city, and I can't speak for staff in this regard, but there will be a decision made in short order. So, it won't be delayed in undue period of time.
And then, if anybody is dissatisfied with that decision, they can, in effect, appeal that to the council?
It'll go to the council for a decision.
Good. Thank you.
That'll be a public hearing.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Janice Genova. Welcome, Ms. Genova.
Janice Genova, I live at 11451 Chambers Drive in Commerce City. So far, the builders involved with the villages of Buffalo Run have consistently and of their own choosing built homes using architectural standards exceeding the minimum standards set by the PUD and the LDC. Much of this past Tuesday's discussion centered on the outside architectural treatment and the Carapace builders' compliance with the city's minimum standards. Minimum standards cannot be the only consideration nor the only concern. The owners of the. standards cannot be the only consideration, nor the only concern. The owners of the homes in the Reserve are asking for architectural continuity. We're asking and we expect the builders in Commerce City to uphold the planned vision set for the villages at Buffalo Run, to conform with the uniformity of architectural and landscape design, to provide visual harmony throughout the community. We're asking that the continued development of the Reserve follow what has become Buffalo Run standard, that is to exceed minimum standards and expectations. City council and city staff have the discretion, based on the site planning objectives, to hold a builder to a higher standard. And we ask you to use that discretion to preserve the Reserve, to support the build out of this phase with houses that complement the outside elevations of our existing homes. We know that the diversity of housing development directly correlates to the demographic diversity and that this in turn goes hand-in-hand with the long-term development and diversity of Commerce City's growth. Included in the city's approval criteria for building are statements that speak to harmony and compatibility with adjacent development and a positive precedent for future cumulative development of the immediate area, as well as being consistent with previously approved subdivision plat. Commerce City itself set our new standard 15 years ago by installing the Buffalo Run Golf Course as the cornerstone of its vision in the north part of the city. The Reserve, as it exists today, complements and enhances that planned community and is immediately next to what is now one of the top courses in Colorado. The Reserve, the maintenance-free patio home phase of the development plan is an important underpinning of Commerce City's economic diversity. Rather than young families, this phase is directed at working professionals, executives, business owners, empty nesters, and retirees. We implore you to hold to the long-term plan for the Reserve phase, to be patient, and to stick with the belief in and the vision for Commerce City's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Dave Price. Welcome, Mr. Price.
Thank you. My name's Dave Price. I live at 11412 Chambers Drive, also in the Reserve. I'm gonna cut back a little bit, talking about how Commerce City has focused on upgrading. What we're talking about in the Reserve is a question of neighborhood. If you walk down Chambers Drive from about 113th to 118th, you're struck with two images. One is a lot of gray hair and second, well-care-for, high-end patio homes. In the Reserve, homes were designed for empty nesters, retirees, who downsized to smaller, albeit, quality homes with minimal maintenance. This demographic requires little from the city and provides a very stable, dependable, and high-end population. What they want in return from the city is consistency and dependability in plans, things promised in the city's Land Development Code. Specifically, Mr. McBlum indicated unmet concerns in his rejection of Carapace's original plans. To paraphrase the city's LDC, the Carapace plans still failed to be consistent with previously approved Reserve subdivision plat, to be in harmony and compatible with adjacent homes, and to create a positive precedent for future development at the Reserve. They continue to miss the mark. As homeowners, we're requesting nothing more from the city than what the city requires in the LDC. I suggest that the fixes for Carapace are simple and straightforward and would not adversely affect their potential in this market. Stone and stucco on all exterior walls with no siding topped with a cement tile roof, ranch-style homes required on all lots adjacent to homes and lots fronting Chambers Drive, all Chambers Drive lots required to be ranch-style homes consistent with the no-maintenance design of the existing homes, including shared driveways. These changes to Carapace's plans would provide the Reserve homeowners the consistency of design they expected and the city approved when we bought into the Reserve at Buffalo Run, a differentiation for Carapace homes that exist nowhere else in the city market. The city with continued diversity in attracting desirable homeowners to a great area. As we said before, we're trying to preserve the Reserve. It's a great neighborhood, has great people in it, it's designed with a certain set of characteristics in mind, and what Carapace is presenting is pretty much gonna destroy that. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you being here. Next, I have Brett Bidgood?
Me.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
My name's Brett Bidgood. I live at 15354 East 115th Avenue. And that's on the corner of East 115th and Chambers Drive. So band up, my friends. These are my good neighbors. And let me just tone my speech down a little bit. I appreciate council's advice. We've been working hard. We don't want to jeopardize our position.
And I'll just add to that, the people that have come tonight have taken their personal time to appear here and that's certainly to be appreciated. But I want to impress upon you that when and if the public hearing is to be held, it's important that that kind of evidence is submitted for the record in the public hearing, because tonight, it's good information to be presented, but it doesn't really count for the public hearing. You realize that. So it needs to be said at the public hearing for it to be a part of that record that would go to court if it goes to court.
That actually makes sense to me now, because I'm wondering why with all of my communication and correspondence, I've yet to convince anybody on the council to take a position on this. I tried. But my wife Karen and I moved up here into our new home at the Reserve four summers ago, actually this coming July. We actually came from a very nice home in an established neighborhood in southeast Denver, where we had lived for the last 25 years prior to moving up here. And we could've waited and stayed down in Denver for easily another 10 years, would've saved us money. My wife would've put a lot less miles on her car. And we could've continued looking for our final resting place. But we found it up here in Commerce City on Chambers Drive and East 115th Avenue at the Reserve at Buffalo Run. It hasn't gone real smooth and now I'm finding myself being pushed toward a new career. I'm studying PUDs and LDCs and the nuances of discretionary authority and how you exercise that authority in a fair and consistent manner. So I'm always keen to learn new things, but to be honest, I have other priorities on my agenda that I would rather be spending my time on these days. One thing I hope that comes out of this is that we find ourselves in a position in the very near future where all the interested parties, the homeowners, the builders, the master declarant, and the city, all can get together and end up with a vested interest in the development and success of my community. That's what I want to have happen. But I have to take a partisan position tonight because the future of my neighborhood and the reason I moved here is in jeopardy. And I was gonna ask you to do two things, but I'm gonna tone it down and just ask you to do one thing. Look at both sides of the issue carefully and fairly. If I was on the high school debate team, if I had the Carapace side of the debate, I could make a cogent argument and I understand where they're coming from. But I would like you, in that process that we're going to be going through, to find the confidence to reaffirm your commitment to the long-term vision that was set out over a decade ago for Commerce City. We have a small neighborhood. Even if it's fully built out, we're gonna have a maximum of 170 homes. They're gonna be unique. You're gonna get a unique set of geriatricians and I think that's gonna be an asset for the long-term development of Commerce City. And I thank you. I thank my neighbors.
Madam Mayor, Pro temp?
Thank you.
Could we have a count for the sake of the minutes of the number of people that did stand up?
Absolutely. If you'll stand, please, so we can count you. 20?
For the minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much, all of you, for coming tonight to speak with us and be here. We appreciate your time.
We do have a number of worker bees that still live in our neighborhood and a bunch of us are up early in the morning, so if you would excuse us to go home and go to bed by 9:00 p.m. so we can get up early and work.
No problem. Thank you, sir. Next, I'll call Ms. Reba Droder.
Excuse me. I've got my button pushed.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Benson. Go ahead.
Well, you know, I represent Ward 2, where all of this property is located, and I appreciate all of you being here tonight. I think we're gonna have a public hearing where this council sits as the judge and jury. We make findings of fact. We're gonna be the final determiners of what happens here. And I hope that that process can be expedited so that we get through it and get to that public hearing as soon as possible. So, thank you. Thank you all for being here again.
Councilman Moreno?
I actually just had a question. Who's keeping an eye on the block? We got the whole Neighborhood Watch Association here. The chief's got you covered.
Chief says he is.
I do really appreciate you all taking the time, your personal time, to be here tonight and letting us know your thoughts on the issue. I really appreciated the meeting that I attended the other night and hearing directly from you. And it is a big issue for you and for that community. So I will keep my comments general and not to any particular issue, as the attorney has advised, but I do thank you for being here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Carson.
I just wanna echo what Mr. Moreno said and also wanted to thank all of you for taking out of your time to come in front of council. Thank you. And it was very nice hearing from you the other night.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Teeter?
Yes, and I will echo what the others said. I attended that meeting with all of you and it went very well. And thank you for being here this evening and giving your testimonies.
Again, I too want to thank you for the time that you took to be here. And City Attorney Gaylor?
I have a very pointed question now. You've expressed appreciation for what you heard at a previous meeting and what you heard this evening. I wanna make the record clear that what you have heard has not caused you to prejudge what's gonna happen when there's a public hearing. Can all of you say that you haven't prejudged anything?
Yes.
Yes.
I think if I understand the council correctly, City Attorney Gaylor, we're expressing our appreciation to them as citizens for coming to the meeting, as we would any other citizens that came forward.
And that's...
Am I correct, council? Okay.
That's certainly appreciated. And Councilman Benson, when you said the council be the judge and jury, you recognize that it's still subject to appeal to the court if it's not handled properly.
Just like any other case, the judge and the jury can make a decision and then you go to the Court of Appeals.
You're right.
All right.
Okay. Councilwoman Carson?
Mr. Gaylor, I just wanted to reassure you that, yes, I have not made a decision, but the builders were also at that meeting, so it was a well-represented meeting that council was at. Both sides were there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now I will call forward Mrs. Reba Droder.
Good evening. Reba Droder, 7505 East 121st Place. And I am just here to remind all of you that you have an invitation from Fish and Wildlife for tomorrow morning at 9:30 to come and view the new visitor's center. This is a sneak peek for you and any of the staff that wishes to come to see this magnificent building. And if you will enter, they are going to open the gate just for you. You will be the first people to drive through the gate that is right over here. And it's called Victory Cross, just right over here on what used to be the Prairie Gateway. And you just follow the path there and it will be open. And Fish and Wildlife will be there to show you this beautiful building. And if you're unable to attend tomorrow at 9:30, you can either contact me or Susan Drabnyak at the Fish and Wildlife. You just call the refuge and they'll answer over there. And we will make arrangements for you especially to see this beautiful place. And just very quickly, the other thing I wanted to say was this weekend, Friday, I went to the most incredible thing I've ever been to in my entire life, and it was the students of Prairie View High School, the Vietnam remembers, for a year they studied Vietnam. They had participants from 23 states. It was the most amazing thing I have ever been to in my life. And if this is what the children of America are doing, we don't have anything to worry about. And congratulations to School District 27J and those fabulous people at Prairie View High School. And I'm sure you'll be able to learn more about it. It was unbelievable. Thousands of people were there with priceless artifacts from Vietnam. And these children, I can't even describe it to you. I'm hoping that we'll be able to sometime show it on Channel 8. It was because this town lost, it is said that this town lost more people in Vietnam than any city in the state of Colorado. And this is a really important thing. And I'll get that tape for you and I'm hoping it can be filmed, shown live, or, I mean, shown through the Channel 8 systems here. So, thank you. Hope to see you tomorrow.
Thank you, Mrs. Droder. City Manager Flannery, we spoke briefly earlier about how that managed to not be on our calendar because I was not aware of that event until it was over with. Do you have any idea what might have happened there? Because I had no idea that event was going on at 27J or I would surely have been there.
Yes. I spoke to the superintendent as well as the principal for Prairie View. I sent you all an email earlier with a link from their webpage showing the pictures and showing the video. And we're actually gonna put a link of that on our webpage as well, so that the two can be linked. Yes, and it's great. It's fantastic.
I would've loved to have been there, had I known.
But specifically, it was communicated to me that the only electeds that the school had invited were the school board themselves because of such a great response and number. Vietnam veterans from all over the states actually came in and had a lot of engaged discussion with students as well as students' families, and then they brought their families as well.
I see. Okay. Councilman Mackeldowney?
I just wanted to thank you, Ms. Droder, for the reminder and for the special invitation for the preview visit tomorrow. Unfortunately, I'm gonna be on a plane at that time and I'm regrettably gonna miss, so...
Well, call me for a time. And the whole events, the public events begin and private events begin in like two and a half weeks. So we have this small window of time for you to see it special.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Councilwoman Carson?
Thank you, Ms. Droder, for that special invitation. And thank you for the kind words for the children of Prairie View High School. Students never failed to amaze me with the work and stuff that they can do when they're left up to their own. So, thank you. And hopefully I will be able to make that.